The Board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the Board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire Board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners and the larger community. Now I'd like the Board members to introduce themselves.
My name is Richard Christoph.
Sam Ciccarelli, Ward Three.
Stuart Dixon, Ward Two.
Bob Frankson, First Ward.
Rosemary Keir, Second Ward. First item is approval of the minutes of the March 23 regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes set forth on March 23, 2010.
Second.
Any comments?
All abstain, obviously Chairman Kerr, I wasn't at the meeting. No.
The minutes are adopted. Next we have a very good piece of business, recognition of our past Board members, Dan Jassica, Angela DeDolph, Mike Adelman, and our former Chairman, Cardi Davis. And I think some members of the Board would like to say a few words about their fellow Board members first, and then we'd like to recognize the members.
Sam, any words?
It's great working with you, Cardi. Great Chairperson, moved things along very well. It was a pleasure working with you. And Angela and Dan, very, very happy to be with you, thanks.
I would echo the sentiments of Sam. It was a pleasure working with the three of you for the period of time that we had a chance to be together. Your thought leadership and interest of both the city and as well as the homeowners were balanced and fair, and we're grateful for your service to the City of Lake Forest, and we thank you.
I would echo Stuart and Sam's comments. We learned an awful lot by watching each of you and the thoughtful questions that you brought to the table. Thank you. And now in recognition of your service, we'd like to present each of you a plaque, and then if you would like, we'd like Dan, Angela, and Chairman Davis to say some words.
Angela, thank you very much for your service to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're grateful. Cardi, thank you, sir, for your service. And Dan, thank you for your service. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a few comments. First, I just wanted to say that it was really a great honor for me to have the opportunity to serve on the zoning board with such fantastic colleagues. And after five years, and we have a five-year term limit, so we cannot re-up after five years, we are retiring or getting off the board. So I want to particularly thank two of my colleagues who are retiring with me, Dan and Angela, and also Mike Adelman, who happens to not be here tonight, but he is also retiring from the Board because he was elected a Fourth Ward Alderman. In addition to that, my three colleagues that are still on the Board, Stu, Rosemary, and Sam, were just great to work with. I enjoyed the five years very, very much. You're a great group of people to work with. Also, I want to thank the staff for everything that they did for us, examining petitions and determining whether we should issue a variation or not, providing us with all the information we needed to make that decision was absolutely fantastic. So thanks very much. Again, I want to wish the new Board the very best as you move forward, and I know you will do better than we have done. So congratulations, and particularly to you, Rosemary, you'll make a great Chairman. Thanks.
Just very briefly, I echo Cardi's sentiments. Cardi, I thought you were a wonderful Chairman. It was a lot of fun to work with you and everybody who's on the Board. I've just had nothing but a good time while we've worked through some of these issues together. It's been a lot of fun. So I hope you have a great next five years for you new Board members and finishing out your terms. And I would just say to the staff again, I know I've said this before, but I am so impressed with how professional you are, how thorough you are, how genuinely concerned you are, fair, and just wonderful people to work with. It's really been a pleasure. So all the best to you as well. Thank you.
Again, I think Dan and Cardi have put it very well. It's been wonderful working with Sam, Rosemary, Stu. Best of luck to you guys, and I'm sure you new members will enjoy working with them as much as I did. And thanks so much to Dan and Cardi. It's been a great five years. It's gone extremely quickly. Been sitting next to you for five years, but it doesn't seem like that at all. And also city staff, it's been great, you know, talking to you, you know, ahead of time, and all the work that you put in. It's made this job incredibly easy. So thank you so much.
And now we'd like to move on to our new petition, a request for approval of variants from the corner, side yard, and rear zoning setback requirements to allow an addition to the garage at 156 Winston Road. Owners, Mark and Jessica Robbins, and representative is Larry Robbins. Do any of you plan to speak before the Board?
Well, I'm Larry Robbins, and if you need me to present anything, there are any questions I'll answer.
Okay. Then I would like to swear you in first. Okay. Would you please?
I can't.
Okay, then we'll swear both of you in. Would you please stand? Thank you. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge? And then I'd like to cover ex parte contacts. Any members of the Board have ex parte contacts to mention?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I will say I met Jessica Robbins when I was out of the property yesterday, but it was simply an introduction. We didn't discuss the current variants. Now we're ready for the presentation by the petitioner.
Okay.
Well, some things go right, some things go wrong. My name's Larry Robbins, and I am representing Mark and Jessica Robbins. Mark sends his apologies. He works for the Lake County Sheriff's Department. He was called to Springfield for some additional training. He really wanted to be here, but county said you had to go. Basically in front of you is the site proposed layout where, if you look at the hedge marks, the 10-foot-12 of mine is really the only buildable piece of property according to current zoning on there. Our request for adding the existing one-car garage, changing the one-car garage to a two-car garage is a result of meeting with Lake County, Lake, excuse me, Lake Forest staff. They were very instrumental. We brought them about three proposals. We worked through everything, and the one that we're presenting to you tonight is the one that the staff recommended to us that meets the current zoning requirements as close as possible. A two-car garage basically is going to allow the homeowner to park two cars on their property. Right now, the existing property is only 10-foot from the setback, does not allow them to park a second car on their own property. So if we could get a two-car garage, they could put their two cars into their property, and they would be in full compliance with being able to have two cars in that area. Our hardship's unique in that we saw that as when they went to buy the property. We knew it existed, but we thought with the adequate side space in what is actually the rear yard and the distance from the other properties that it would be a reasonable request, and that's why we're pursuing this at this time. Basically, we're going to be looking to go nine, a little over nine feet to the north, and go no farther than 10 feet away from the property line as discussed with the staff. This is a tree survey, but then here's our proposed front elevation showing the two-car garage. With a hip roof on it, with the attached breezely showing. And if we go right to, let's see, on this one, we don't have the overlays. One of the things that we did not put in our proposal was that we will be using similar materials in the brick to match it as close as possible, and we'll be matching the existing color, the trim, and everything of the existing home. We plan on doing a semi-green rebuild of this, which we're going to take our time in demoing the structure, reusing much of the existing brick as possible, and trying to use any of the recycled wood, and whatever wood we can reuse, we're going to use in with this project also. In front of you up there, you'll see the 3D perspective of what the new proposed garage would roughly look like from the Winston Street address. Another view from the Highview Terrace Winston Street address. And I think the one thing that would be interesting to you would be the potential overlays of what the actual area of the roof line would be differential from the existing house. So with a front gable sitting in front of it, it's broad, it comes way forward with the hip, the roof will be leaning back away from the street side, and you'll very rarely see that. We are going to be up a little bit higher, but with the slope roof going back, it should minimize that impact. And I think basically that's my presentation on it.
Staff, would you please identify the issues for the Board?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Excuse me. I want to start off by clarifying that the staff report that was in front of you tonight is identical to what you received in your packets, with the exception that we corrected the typo that we emailed you about earlier this week. So this property is located in the Northmore neighborhood of town. The neighborhood is characterized by very narrow lots and modest structures. The property in question is a corner lot. It's on the southeast corner of Winston and Highview Terrace, and the existing one-story rental house with a one-car attached garage was built in 1953. This request is a unique situation because it's unclear how the houses in this neighborhood were approved for construction given the setback requirements. We know that the neighborhood was subdivided in 1923 when the setback requirements were not as extreme as they are now. And when houses were eventually constructed in the 50s and 60s, it appears that this 1923 subdivision plat was used as the sole guiding document for granting the building permits. If the setback standards were applied to the lots, a home would not be able to be built in the buildable area, even though a legal zoning lot was subdivided in 1923. The project involves widening the existing one-car garage and driveway to allow for the two cars parked, for two cars to be parked in the garage, and altering the existing roof to accommodate this change. Because the house is non-conforming under the current setback requirements, the petitioner is asking for a variance from the rear and corner side yard setback requirements, and this will accommodate both the proposed addition to the garage and the roof alterations. To clarify the requested variance, the petitioner is requesting that the project be set back no closer than 20 feet from the north property line, and no more than 10 feet from the east property line. And the proposed project is not getting any closer to the street property line than currently exists in the current condition. The petitioner has taken a lot of care to keep the garage at the minimum size necessary to accommodate a second car, and additionally, the use of a hips roof structure, as mentioned, should minimize the visual impact of the change in height of the roofs. And finally, two-car garages are not at all unusual in this neighborhood. So the proposed plan conforms to both the building split scale requirement and the lot coverage requirement, so no variance are needed for those things. Public notice was given, and the City did not receive any comments on this project. So given that, the recommendation is to approve with the condition that the driveway be widened only the minimum amount necessary for the completion of the project. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Christoph, do you have any questions or comments?
The only question I have is, what is the differential in the height between the structure and the garage? And I can't, I just want to make sure I understand, what is the differential?
Mr. Robbins, can you?
We would be approximately one foot eight and a quarter inch higher than the existing gable, but then again, we'd be going back about 12 feet. So when you go on that angle, you really, the visual effects of that, you really wouldn't see it.
Longer slope.
The longer slope going back, it's going to be, the ridge is going to be way farther in the middle of the house, similar to the existing main structure of the house.
Thank you.
Sam?
So we're only losing one tree?
Yes, there's a cedar. And it's basically about a six to seven-inch diameter cedar, and it's in poor condition, but we'd be willing to take that same diameters and replant on the property. We've discussed this with the staff.
From the way it was bordered off, it doesn't look like there's any other impact than anything else in here.
Not that we can see.
Okay. I have no other questions.
I have no questions.
Just a couple of questions for staff. The, just for my benefit, on the plat where it, the red-hatched area where it says buildable area on the west side of the property, what is that noting? Yeah, there it is, right up there.
Pardon, I didn't hear your question.
Well, the red-hatched area, if you look up on the overhead.
That is the area that, under the current setback requirements, so 40 feet from the front yard, and 30 feet from the rear yard, I believe, 40 feet from the corner side yard.
So even though there's a little space between the existing.
10, that's the only area that, under the current setback requirements, they're allowed to build on, on this lot.
And one other, when we make reference to the rear of the lot, even though you're focusing on the north side of the property line, even though the property's access off of Winston Road.
To make these requirements less stringent, well, that's not the case. When you have a corner lot, the more narrow side of the lot is considered the front yard.
Uh huh, okay. Thank you, it's helpful. No further questions?
I want to ask staff, to be clear, these variances are encroaching how much into each of the setbacks?
The rear yard, the variance currently, under the existing condition, the current structure encroaches five feet into the rear yard setback, I believe, but it will be encroaching about 10 feet into the rear yard setback. And the encroachment onto the corner side yard setback will not change at all. So that setback is, under, the required setback is 40 feet, but the current condition is only a 10-foot setback, and that will not change.
Madam Chairman, just to further clarify, the request is to cite the addition such that it is located no closer than 20 feet to the north property line. It's currently located, I believe, 29 feet from the north property line. The addition is getting no closer to the east property line, but it is extended in line with the house.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have none. No questions.
We are happy to take public testimony at this time. Does anyone carry a cross-examine by their petitioner or staff?
No.
Any final questions?
No.
It's time then, seeing no rebuttal, I will ask the staff if they have any additional response they'd like to add. Okay. Then it's open for Board discussion and comment.
I think the request is fairly straightforward. No issues or concerns with regards to said request, and I think we should probably move forward with the motion to approve said variance.
Do we have a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the variances submitted based on the findings in the staff report and recommendations dated May 23, 2011. The complete staff report and the materials included in the packet and public testimony are incorporated as part of the findings.
And I second the motion.
Chairman, if I could clarify that that motion includes the recommended condition of approval, that the width of the driveway not be expanded more than necessary to access the garage. That was noted in the staff report.
You can amend that as well.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Now, if there are any other items the public would like to bring to the attention of the Zoning Board of Appeals, seeing no other items, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Hey now. Yes, ma'am. I did second it.